Welcome to the town panel select board meeting. On January ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six oh one P M. I like to call the meeting to order. Board number roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Carl Stromeyer.
Mike Gardner.
Jamie Percy.
Brian Harris.
Uh, everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, pool the agenda. Um, public comment, minutes, warrants, updates from town officials. Discussion regarding fiscal year twenty-six transfer station rules and fees. Discussion with planning commission chair, updates and future plans, grand list errors and omission is discussion in action. Old Town Hall discussion and future plan, part-time clean position hiring recommendation in action. Fiscal year twenty-six general and road budget discussion, fiscal year twenty-six town warning review and discussion. Public comment and adjourn, and I'd like to add an executive for legal, um, at the end of the meeting before we adjourn.
Make a motion to accept it with the change.
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, any public comment here? Uh, minutes of December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I mean, discussion, questions, corrections, comments? All of them favor?
Hi.
Oh, I'm gonna abstain from that, sorry. I knew that someone was in here, sorry. Uh, four eyes, one abstention. Accounts payable, December twenty-seventh, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and twelve cents.
Back in it.
Any questions? All of them favor?
Hi.
Counts payable, January third, two thousand twenty-five, seven thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-three cents.
So moved.
Back in it.
Questions, corrections? All of them favor?
Hi.
Counts payable, January tenth, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents.
So moved.
Back in it.
All of them favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Payroll, December twenty-fourth, thirteen thousand, two ninety-five eighty-one.
So moved.
Back in it.
Questions? All of them favor?
Hi.
Payroll, January third, two thousand twenty-five, twelve thousand, one fifty-nine eighty-six.
So moved.
Back in it.
Questions? All of them favor?
Hi.
Payroll, January tenth, two thousand twenty-five, thirteen thousand, forty-seven dollars and two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All of them favor?
Hi.
Uh, updates from town officials.
I unfortunately do not have any, but I think it's because everyone's trying to get their reports in for the annual town report. Um, I just had one from Eddie that he still has the puppies. Um, I have been trying to reach our state's attorney so that we can get them released, but that hasn't happened yet. And do anything until we hear from her. But that's the only update, other than the flagpole, um, was installed without a hitch and the back walks were finished. And they look great.
All of them, concrete work, perfect. I don't have anything to zoning administrator, I will have one next. Meeting though, I should have. Regarding some different properties. Um. Just those, uh, discussion regarding transfer station rules and fees. That's you, Tom. Everyone has that?
Yeah. So this came up, um, when I asked Tom for reports for the town report. Um, next year, hopefully we will have this discussion like a month or two in advance of budgeting. Not a month or two in advance of budgeting, I mean, a month or two in advance of this. In budgeting, cause if they're gonna raise, you know, permit costs or. Or at least the revenue side of things that should be reflected on the.
Right, we can adjust it on the budget.
Yeah, well, what we have, uh. I'll give you my own, boy. The, uh, new rates, basically, the, the two lowest bags we have. Are the third piece of twenty, and, uh, they're less than. Forty, forty percent of the total bags we get, so using my projection on that. What we had last year. Is they had, uh, like twenty-nine thousand, thirteen bags, okay? A quarter, uh, in- increase on those would give us six hundred, three thousand, or no. Six hundred and three, uh, basically twenty-five cents. Then all the other bags above that that go basically to thirty to the, to the fifty-fives. Uh, we get a fifty cent increase. And that would give us a, uh, an increase of, so we have forty-two. Forty-two hundred and seventy dollar and. Which year? I've got this total for the year, excuse me, I, that first one was a month or a quarter. So, so the, uh, the smaller bags will be twenty-two seventy-seven for. For an increase on a year and the, uh, fifty cent, or larger bags would be forty-two seventy, so it's. Sixty-five, forty-seven is, you know, projection, that'd be sixty-five, fifty, basically. The increase, you know, revenues on the bags. Alright, and then in order to, to save money, I just thought, oh, you know, you, you wanted to do the, uh. We do the free dump day, and that's eighty-five hundred dollars right there. You wanna save some money.
Can I speak to that, um, really quick? I was just talking about, uh, getting rid of free dump day and what that would look like. And because of the way you use free dump day, you kind of apply it to different invoices throughout the year. Um, we have to account for that in the budget anyways.
You wouldn't be saving no money.
You wouldn't be saving any money, you spend that money.
Would, no, but if we take it out of there, that's, yeah, we're spending, we're spending.
You're sending it out of free dump day instead of out of your trash recycle line.
But we're, we're increasing the revenues.
Get rid of, right, but we're still have to account for that.
Right, I understand that on the way out, but on the way in, we'd, we'd increase your revenues. We're still, we're still, we're still planning, planning to get rid of it.
Correct.
But we, we would get paid for it this time.
Correct, but a, a portion of people pay the sixty dollars plus. Um, for the thing, for free dumping, because normally, you, you would, why would you pay sixty dollars? For, and, and just pay sixty dollars for a permit?
Well, a lot of people just recycle them, that's what they pay, seriously.
But, but I'm saying to you, Tom, that, um, and we don't, and you don't have any real firm figures on if we would save or not.
Well, with the income of being increased is what I'm saying.
Do you have, do you have paperwork that shows us that?
No, but basically, you know, I know that, that most of us average about forty, forty-five dollars is how many we have, basically eighty-five hundred.
I, I understand that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with what you're telling me, Tom, that you understand that, that, um. It costs us about eighty-five hundred dollars for, for free dump day, so I'm gonna, based on your experience. Over there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna believe what you're telling us without documentation, alright, as far as I'm concerned. But, but what I don't wanna do personally is that really, for, for the sake of eighty-five hundred. On a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budgetary item, I don't wanna get rid of free dump day.
That's fine.
Right, but I am, I am taking your word for it that it costs us eighty-five hundred because you, you, you've been doing it and you, I think you know what you're talking about.
Here, here, here's what happens, like honestly, it's, uh, you know, some people come in there, they get three. Can I use my free dump day, I haven't used it, you know, last year. I'm gonna use it, so I said, yeah, that's fine, and you get somebody comes in there, we had some ladies that actually, within the parameters, it was an eight-foot truck bed. And we counted, uh, if you took off one hundred. Fifty, you know, forty-five gallon bags. They hadn't strapped that net over there, they were just high above the bed.
Right, right, so.
So that, that was a.
What's?
I don't, I, I don't.
It sounds to me, it sounds to me like the board doesn't wanna get rid of free dump day, what's your, what's your pleasure on free dump day as a board?
I would like to keep it, otherwise keep it for more stuff on the.
I don't wanna keep it.
Actually, actually, I'm glad you decided this.
I, and I understand what you're trying, you know, we've been, we've been on you to, to cut costs and, and I understand where you were going with it, and I appreciate that a hundred percent. And, and I really do, except for, I, I don't think that's, well, if we were cutting eighty-five thousand dollars on free dump day, then I'm all for it, but, yeah. But eighty-five hundred, I'm gonna.
It, it's, it's, it's a, it's a figure that actually I think is probably very, very close.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
You know, you just, you just look at them and you, you know, like, oh geez, you look at this.
So.
But it's all, it's all.
I would like you to track it this coming year. I would like you to track how many, how much garbage goes through free dumping. You can do that, you've got plenty of time, when somebody comes in, you can count the bags up so that we know.
If you could, if you could give it a cha- a shot to try to.
I'd say what I'll do, I'll, I'll, each dump day, I'll put another column in there. I'm gonna basically with some of the things, cause it's all loose sometimes. It's all loose and so forth, I, what I'll do far off is I'll do, and that's not the best I can, on each one and put it beside. Yeah, make another column in the spreadsheet, cause I have those listed. So I, I put the dates in, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll put another column in, and then we could, we'll track.
If we don't have information, we can't make good decisions.
Well, I.
I understand that, but, but. If you, if you've done the best you can, done your due diligence on giving us paperwork. Okay.
Okay, well, that's never been asked before, but I shall.
Okay.
I shall, I'll just, like I said, I'll just put another column in my spreadsheet, that when they do the free dump day, I'll, I'll put down. You know.
Because that way, that way, we know, okay.
Alright.
How much garbage is going through on free dump day, and then we'll also know how many people are utilizing free dump day. Now we can turn around and start making decisions about that.
How many people use free dump day?
But you don't know how much garbage is going through on free, I mean, you, you, like, let me finish. You kind of do, but all I'm asking for is, is you come in, yeah, you've got five bags, you've got a whole bunch. Let me just estimate on how many you got, just so that we have some figures, that's all.
Or that, or ask them for a count. And you might.
I know, I, I, a lot of times, you know, they'll, they'll say what they have, sometimes they come in with a big load, right? I'll go ahead and take a look, make sure that they don't have construction materials, stuff in there that is not allowed, and that, that's happened quite a few times, and people. Kind of sneak a, you know, two before and things like this, like guys, you know, that's you're gonna have to pay for. So I mean, that, 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 I, you know, I mean, that was the, you know, larger loads that, you know, for free dumping, right, I do inspect it. If somebody can miss, I got four bags.
Yep.
Okay, that's. You know, that's, that's a cheap one, but like I said, that one that, we sat there and counted that we couldn't believe it, but they had one hundred and thirty gallon bags. Back at pickup, unreal.
Alright, so we're gonna get rid of, we're gonna keep free dump day, we're good with that, alright, and Tom's gonna do the best he can to track it, perfect.
I will, I will try it.
Let's move on to our, let's move on to the fees.
Can I ask, um, where did you get your, um, increase, like cover, do we know what our, um. Fees are gonna be for, um, pickup and taken away, what do you call it, trucking fees? Have they been raised?
Trucking fees are gonna go up somewhat, but then we're gonna have way less trucking. That's, that's the thing, that's where we're really gonna do some savings. But, uh, yeah, we just have to, we just have to work on that, and, uh, it's gonna take a little bit of time before we know exactly what we're gonna have. I can only speculate right now. You know, once, once I get it going and, you know, you have to, you have to tell by the, the pressures, you know, that the ramp has and what's going in. And once it gets really high, then you, you call and come in and get it the next day or whatever, so you have to, you have to watch what you're doing now.
I was just wondering if the increase. How you, you came about that?
The increase, I, as I said, the, uh, the, the lowest two bags are white ones. You know, they're three dollars or four dollars and twenty-five cents, I made twenty-five cent increases. All the others are fifty.
Right, I see what, I was wondering what the logic was behind it.
What's the numbers? So how many, how many we had last year, you know, going from, uh.
So you, so you, so you didn't do a, a ten percent across the board?
That's what I'm asking.
Right, because he, he said.
Over time in there, I'd be going into nickels and dimes or something.
Well, you brought it up to, because here is twenty-five cent, but you would have done the ten percent.
Yeah. What it is, is basically averages out to, uh, about nine, nine and a half percent. Which is a pretty good jump anyhow.
Yeah, but you said that the smaller bags were the least amount that you take in as a general rule.
Yeah, I did.
That's why you only raised them up a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
And you go, you go from twenty gallons to thirty gallons, and then you're, you're going up.
To fifty-five, yeah.
You sense it's ten percent.
Right.
And the other two are twenty-five, it's for, it brings it down so much, but it's, yeah, eight and a half to nine percent, basically.
Yep.
You know.
Okay.
Um, I've got two questions, Tom, on the other stuff. Uh, on the refrigerators, freezers, um, all the eight, all the ones with the freon in it?
Yeah.
Um, I don't, um, who pays for the removal of the freon?
We do.
How much does that cost?
None, must be recharge by far.
I just was wanting to know, because we're charging twelve, and I see everybody else is charging fifteen for getting rid of their stuff.
They, they come and take the, uh. The A, A C units and charge us a couple bucks, and it's only a couple bucks worth of this.
Okay.
The reason they take the A C, like, playing this, is that there's so many different ports. For, uh, gases they have in there, and, and they explained it to me, the one guy said, actually, some of them are actually deadly. These people are gonna cut into things and junk them. You know, they, they can actually kill themselves, seriously, but, you know.
Um.
That's their, that's their thing, but that's why they take those back to the shop, take that, and then they, cause they, they can't carry all, all the canisters, all the different gases.
Right.
With them, they, but the refrigerators is only like three or four, so that's why they do those there, the rest of them they take back.
Oh, I noticed that you're not charging for rims.
No, they don't charge us for rims.
Oh, cause I was up at Fennington Tire today, and I was talking to them, and they charge a five dollar fee for rims, why don't we charge anything?
Because they don't charge us for anything.
Right, but you still have to move them. So shouldn't we, shouldn't we get a, a few bucks from them, because we're the ones that are gonna be turning around and have to move those tires and stuff? Just because, you know, just because we don't pay anything for it, doesn't mean it doesn't cost us anything.
Well, that's right. So when we get, when we get rid of tires, Tom, when you get rid of tires. Um, do you pay? Uh, homage when we get rid of tires?
It's by the, by the piece, by the tire, right?
It's all piece.
Okay, so when we accept a tire with a rim. It doesn't cost us anymore to get rid of that than it does one without.
They make money on that.
I know they do, I'm not, but I'm worried about us.
Exactly.
Okay, so if we're not, if we're not paying, if we pay five dollars for a sixteen-inch tire to get rid of it. And we pay five dollars and fifty cents to get rid of it with a rim, then we should charge. But if we pay five dollars with it, without the rim, then I'm fine with that, because, because I'd rather have them bring that tire with a rim to us. Than have it over the bank on, uh, Lad Road.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm fine with that.
I'm just asking questions.
But no, it's a good question, Carl, it's a great question.
The other question I have is, is why are we taking propane tanks with valves?
Well, because we can do that, and what I simply do is cut them off.
Is it, what's that?
I simply, I simply cut them off and throw them in, in the, uh, metal.
But isn't that kind of hazardous?
Not really.
They need.
They're empty, so, you know. You get to be a very little, very little smell out of them, and that's it. But no, no one going without holes in them or being empty.
Okay, I would like to see we charge more for those.
Well, after we make money off. We, they win the metal scrap metal.
I understand that, but you, you're turning around and, and you're, and you're actually. Cutting the, the thing off, you're actually turning around, um, you're trying, you're not there for free.
No.
Okay, so we're really not making money on that, because we're paying you to cut those things off.
Right, we have, we have, we always got metal blades, it takes me probably a minute and a half to cut it off.
And we're not charging for tanks without the valves anyway. And, and we put those in our metal bin?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so.
Basically same.
Do, the, I, I have, right, I'm sorry, Carl, I thought you were done, that's how you're done, are you, are you all set?
I'm all done.
Okay.
For now. How many propane tanks a year do you do?
Not that many, really. We have, we have, I gotta do some, after I cut some off this week, if I got too cold, I'm not going out there.
Come on, what do you think, less than a hundred?
I'll tell you what, my ear, my ear.
Why, one of them on fire, if there's something, it'll keep you warm while you're cutting it off.
Yeah, light it, light it up, I'm going, but no, it's just. But it is, you know, we don't get, we don't get that many.
So what do you think, less than a hundred?
Oh, mine, wait, wait. Forty, maybe thirty, forty.
Okay.
Tom, um. Demolition and construction, just know, just curious where these, um. Um, numbers came from, so a half a yard, half a cubic yard of demolition. You have set up at forty-two dollars.
I just, I just raised it, uh.
Right, I see that, and, and a cubic yard, you have set up at eighty-eight dollars.
Yeah.
So it's not.
But it should be, should be at half.
Well, that's what I think, it should be, so should we go to forty-four dollars for a half yard? And stay and keep the cubic yard at eighty-eight?
I, I'll go through that again.
I, I think, I think we should keep the, it's just. Right, I, I think a half yard should be forty-four bucks.
It should be proportional.
Right.
I'm trying to keep it even, uh.
Right, and then the, the quarter yard, the quarter yard, twenty-two. Right, we'll go eleven, twenty-two, forty-four, and eighty-eight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm changing that, I'm gonna act and get that squared away. I may guess.
There's just, I just wanna be consistent across the board, that's all, you know, that was, that was, that was about the only thing that I really.
What, what I'm envisioning here, once we get to compactors then, we'll put this down where the number one dumpster is. The number two dumpster, we'll leave it for a spare, because if something breaks down, we're gonna have to put some, some stuff on place. And then we got three more dumpsters down there, plus our other spare. So that what we can do is, we'll just use those three for the end, you know, we'll all be indoor construction, how you put it, any of them.
Well, yeah, I thi- I think, I think where we're gonna save, my personal opinion. Okay, there's, there's a couple places we're gonna save a significant amount of money. One is with the compactors, that's the goal of the compactors anyway.
Absolutely.
Right, on our truck, okay, so that's gonna be our biggest, should be, should be, I must say, will be, should be. Our biggest, one of our biggest savings, right? One of our other places that I envision seeing pretty substantial savings is on our construction. Once that's undercover and we're not paying for water.
Right.
Right? Well, because, because right now, we pay by the ton, and every time it rains, we're paying eight, eight pounds a gallon. Right, I learned that in school a long time ago, I, I think that's gonna be a major, another major place that we're gonna save.
Really tried to keep on, but somebody slipped one by last year, uh, last two weeks, it took a whizzer. Of, uh, drywall, and why he has sideburns.
Well, that's what I'm saying, once they're undercover.
Yeah.
Once they're undercover, doesn't matter, so the drywall in, the drywall's not soaking up any water, it's on the roof. That's, that's what's killing us, I, that's one of the things that.
I know, I know.
And I know you know that.
I know it's true, it's true, my.
Yeah, no, and I know that, Tom, I just, I just think that's, those are a couple places where we're gonna save a significant amount of money. Oh, I'm sure you do, I'm not.
People coming in, so.
I'm not faulting you, I just, that, that's right, that. What, what they do is they come in and they dump it in there where it's not supposed to go. And then they complain about the cost, well, you, you contributed to the higher cost by putting something where it's not supposed to be.
Yeah.
Simple as that, but.
At the time, it could be more than a little frustrating.
I know, I, I, I'm with you, Tom. Are we good at everything else with the, with the transfer station? I didn't see anything that.
What?
Um.
Well, I'll redo this stuff and I'll send it all off and. There, I meant.
Everybody's good with the fees?
So forth.
Charlie, you got all your questions answered?
Yeah, pretty much.
Are you happy with the answers?
Uh, I'm satisfied.
Okay, well, there you go, happy, satisfied, I guess they're.
Oh, they're two different things, but.
Yeah, they're close though.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
They're, they're in the same ballpark at least anyway, right? Alright, we're good.
We're getting there.
They're good, like, go watch, I'm thinking Lions play Notre Dame then.
There we go. I'm trying to make it quick. Sorry, we're trying, we're trying to make it, yeah, depends on how they play, right?
I do appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we will, we will take care of this, we'll just tweak it a little bit here and there and.
Yeah.
Make some corrections and, uh, we should be in good shape.
Perfect, thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh, discussion with planning commission chair, updates and future plans, John, that's you. Come on up, John.
Hey, John. I apologize if I had a sinus infection and stuff going on, so I'll get, try to get over that. I'm gonna go.
Right over there.
Some don't work on my computer right now, so. Been a pain. Um. Part is playing right now, uh, wanna start updating bylaws with the new rules, new laws that came out from the state, um. We want to, um, there's some other topics that we got into, but I know that. It all got squashed and different things happened in between, um. But if there's anything else that the board wants, uh, want us to start working on, we can start adding that, those things in.
Well, I'd love for you to get done, I'd like, love to get the, to just go right. Hard and heavy on those bylaws, get them in, get them done. And then we'll go on to whatever from there, I mean, there's gonna be a couple things, but really, I'd like, that's where I'd love you to put most of your energy right now.
Okay.
Speaking only of me, not the rest of the board.
Well, that's right, that's what we're doing, right, let's talk, you know, as individuals. Then we'll give, I think, I think as individuals, we'll give you, you know, what we see in them, then as a board, we'll make a decision right now and push them, correct, and push that towards you guys.
Yeah.
That, that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Angie, you have anything that you're looking for from planning commission?
No.
Jamie?
Just update. Just like, just fast, just so we're staying on, in track. That's amazing.
That's how it's starting on our next meeting near, so.
Brian?
Uh, just making sure that we start meeting more regularly.
Yeah.
Cause it is the chair's responsibility to call for meetings.
Yep.
There's a couple things from my standpoint, um. Absolutely, the bylaws, because the state put us way behind the eight ball with the housing. Um, with the cluster housing, for lack of a better term, right now. Um, we're, we're way behind on, on that kind of stuff, so I think that's kind of a. I think those are kind of a really important thing right now. Um. I think one of the other things that we need to look at. Um. Is, I think our. Bylaws are a little bit lax on, um. And I know the state's gonna supersede some of this stuff, too, but there is things that we can do as a town. Um, on, um, cell towers and, and those kinds of things out there, like, um. The Public Utilities Commission. You know, certain things that, that I think we can do that we. Haven't paid a real close attention to was a. Uh, you know, through our planning and zoning and, and our bylaws. Um. Jesus, seems like there was one other thing, but maybe not, I think.
We need the technical assistance, um, because, you know, there's a lot that goes into.
Right.
Bylaws and all, BPAC is, um, that's within their continuum of care, so. Um, Hannah can put you in connection with BPAC to make sure you get the technicals.
Right, and I believe they've done a lot of the initial work at the two thousand twenty-two. Report they did, when you guys did the, where you could develop stuff in town.
Yep.
If you look at the end of that report, they turned around and did the whole thing, um, updating the bylaws with the new, um. Home Act.
Yeah.
Stuff in the state.
And they're, they're sort of the ones that oversee the regional plan and then help the towns implement those regional plans. Um, at the town level, so definitely they're a great resource. And it's, it's my understanding that the town will soon be in charge of Act two fifty.
Ah.
Ah.
Land use bylaws, all that kind of stuff, so you should get that stuff going for the, the new stuff gets piled on.
Right, looking for it.
Right, and I think, you know, I think pushing, pushing to get those, the updated bylaws, John, would be, because it's, you know, it's, it's a process, right, we have to, you, you gotta have public hearings and you gotta do this, I mean, it's not, it's not just a matter of meeting a couple of meetings a month and rewriting the bylaws and we're good to go.
Right.
It takes, it just takes time, and you know that, so I don't know if you get into that, but I think that was home, that, that cluster housing thing is really important because we don't have a lot of, our bylaws are pretty lax on that, you know, multi.
They're paying for the, uh, accessory dwelling?
No, I'm thinking more of the, um, uh, where they can do, um, like a duplex.
Yeah, multi.
Or multi-part.
Right, because there's no more single unit.
That's, that's right, and our, our bylaws don't, we don't address that.
Right.
Yep. You know, we don't address the, address any of that, so we need to, we need to get those updated as quick as we can. And, and go from there. Um. What, what do you, um, so we've given you our kind of directive. What we think, I, anything else, board have anything else, I think, I think we're all good, right?
I think we just gave them a bunch.
Well, yeah, no, it's not, it's, you know, it's kind of the same, but it, it's, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, it's not, it's not.
It's gonna be done in a couple of meetings.
No, well, it shouldn't take too awful long, because like Tara said, the directive is already, B C R C's already done some of this stuff.
Already done some of this.
So, so reach out to B C R C, grab, grab whatever they, whatever you can get from them, there's no sense reinventing the wheel when it's already there.
Yeah, it should happen.
Right, right, we just have to readjust the size of the wheel or do whatever, we have no sense in reinventing the whole thing.
Yep.
Just reach out to them and, and go from there, um, anything, I guess I'm, I'm gonna put the ball in your court now. Um, anything that you or your board would like to see from the select board? Uh, you guys brought up anything in your meetings, any discussion, um, anything that we could do to help you guys, um, you know?
Nothing I could think of yet, but I can, uh, we'll discuss it too at the next meeting too, and then, and then if there's something, I can forward it on to.
That's fine, yeah, you know, I, I guess, I guess what we're trying to do, we talked about this back a couple of months ago, is we're trying to, um, have the chain of communication better between everybody.
Between all, between all the boards.
Between, between the select board and the planning commission, select board and, and the D R B if we need to, or Parks and Rec or whatever we need to go with.
Yep.
Let's, let's get communication going so that we're not, well, what's the planning commission doing, I don't know, nobody's talking to them. Right, or the, the type thing, and I'm just using that because you're here, obviously. You know, so that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do a little bit of, you know, um. So, yeah, if there's any, if there's anything that the next planning commission, you guys come up with that we can, the select board can do to help make your, um, commission more successful or whatever, let us know, okay, see what we can do, I mean, that's, you know, that's our goal. It was a goal on this whole process, really.
I think just giving us some clear goals for the planning commission, that's gonna help a lot, that way, we do have a meeting, it's just not an endless debate on what way we should go in.
Right.
You got, you got a direction that has.
At least you got something to start with right now, and then when those are done, okay, let's tackle the next project, right? I think, I think that housing act, we're way behind on the state on that one, the state did, did a whole bunch of things that kind of crazy, and they're not, I don't think they're geared towards, um, smaller towns, I think it's geared more towards, you know.
City living, yeah.
That's right, you know.
The rationale was, the rationale was, when you have these larger, older houses, and you have this large, older house, and it's only set up for a single unit, then, you know, it makes sense, this is the state's, it makes, makes sense to just not have single units in the state zone.
I'm not sure the state had any rationale behind.
They had that rationale.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
I think they do, well.
I watched some, I watched some of the, the meetings they had on that.
This is more like they go with short-term feel-good without any.
Well, exactly. Basically, but don't forget, that was set for the Burlington Metroplex.
Yeah, that was set, like I said, short-term with no, with no thinking, wasn't thought of.
But all the metro people, they love it.
What's that? Well, I mean, there's that aspect to it, but there's.
They needed housing.
That's right, let's, let's.
Let's just keep going.
Right, John, John's got a.
A lot on his plate.
He's got a direction for the, direction for his planning commission, um. And, and if he has any thing that the planning commission needs for us, he'll bring it back to us, you know, your, your next meeting is when?
Nineteenth.
Okay, so next week, right? Oh, no, two weeks.
Um, maybe you should reach out to B C R C before that, see if they can send somebody down, or at least send some information over for us.
Yep. I'll find out. I'll get a report.
Perfect.
Excellent. Anything else for John?
No, I think we're good.
We're good.
We're good. Alright.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, John.
See you on the nineteenth.
Guys, have a good one.
You too.
Don't forget your drink.
Don't forget your drink.
Yes, take your, take your contamination with you. Where's the wipes?
Okay, grand list errors and omissions, discussion in action.
Let me get rid of that for you to sign, but I sent that all to you earlier, there were the two trailers that became the towns, and then I believe an error on the Armstrong property when it was subdivided. Um, you all just need to make an emotion, make a motion to accept the changes to the twenty-four grand list.
Do we have the numbers so we can include them in the motion?
Yeah, because we have to have the parcel numbers.
Yeah. Was thinking.
Hey, there's only one on here, right?
I didn't see parcel numbers listed in the email.
I didn't either, I tried.
And I only have one here. I only have the Armstrong one. We have the, the parcel numbers around there.
Yes. The second one is the one that, yes.
Isn't there? Wasn't there another one or just this one?
There's three listed on there. There's two, the others in an arm.
I'm sorry, yep, I'm sorry, they're all. Okay, sorry, I, I was misreading this thing, it's my fault. Um, errors and omissions, span number four nine five one five six one two two zero five. Uh, was inactive parcel made active in there. Span number four nine five one five six one zero zero nine nine came active when it was town property. Um. And four nine five one five six one one two zero two became active when it was town property.
Make a motion that we adjust the said property numbers free, total.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, make the adjustment to the grand list.
Twenty twenty-four grand list.
Twenty twenty-four grand list.
I'll stop then.
Any more discussion on that, any questions? All in favor? There's a, this needs to be signed on, you know, second page. Yep, one needs to be signed by the board. Excuse me. Old Town Hall discussion and future plan.
So I brought this back so that you could hopefully give me a direction, it's been a year since we postponed the community center idea. Um, at the time, if I had thought a little more clearly, I would have pulled out the town plan and proved how a community center fits within our town plan. Um, I can do that today, that is page sixty-two of our town plan, under community facilities, goals, objectives, and actions. Um, so it is all here, but I basically would like to know if I can start trying to, um, get services in the old town hall and then start getting grant funding and other things, which I would of course get prior approval for, or if you would prefer, I survey residents again. I will say that we've been paying for the building still since the third, we've been in this building for three years. The heat costs are the same as they were when we were in it. And it's just sitting empty, and I know for a fact this, the panel seniors could use it. With very little.
Yeah.
And we're still paying insurance and all that stuff.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the bills are all.
All the same.
Mm-hmm.
And so it was literally a year ago that you asked me to wait for the B C R C study, which is done, and it didn't really suggest a lot of options. Think it boils down to, we can offer it to social service agencies who would be sort of self-sufficient in using the building, um. When we think about, this was supposed to be a great meeting space, but it takes a lot of logistics. Um, myself or Hannah have to be here because the rest of the building is unopened, we can't just give out keys. Only if you wanna have like a lockbox with the key. However, if we did something like that at the old town office, if we had a lockbox with a key, the agencies.
Right, it's not individual people, it's the agency.
Agencies such as Head Start, such as Pave, such as Sunrise, such as the, um, panel seniors, agencies that would have a real use for that building, would have approval from you all to use the building, they would have a code to get the key out and get into the building, and we wouldn't have to meet them and do all of that logistical stuff, so. It's, it's different than this space, it, it's definitely different than this, um.
It's already handicap accessible.
And we add the, like, the energy assessment down on it, we've had the A D A assessment down on it, so we've, we've got a lot of, like, the pre-work in on it.
Yeah.
Um.
And I have issues with, it's a great space, but security issues with having our town office where we're doing possibly, um, sensitive, I guess, that wouldn't be the right word, but doing.
Doing business.
We're doing business there and, and trying to manage this space and, and not being able to secure the business space from this space.
Right. There's no way to really keep this up, right? Someone has to be here.
Right, I agree with that.
Anybody else have anything?
I'm good with that, I'd like to.
I would love to see something happen with the building instead of sitting there being empty.
I'd like to see, um.
The seniors and people using it.
I'd like to see some feelers. I guess for lack of a better term, send out Tara to see who, what organizations may or may not be interested in using the property, and we may already have that.
I, I do, and I hesitate to do it again because I had to turn around and tell them that I'm.
That we could.
Well, I think it's so. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this board, like, I'm gonna ask this board, um, I don't know if I'm, I mean, I don't know if I'm gonna ask for a vote right now, but I'm gonna ask for a directive.
That's a vote, Mike.
What's that?
Make it a vote.
Well, we, we can't, we, okay, alright, so, so let's make it a vote, I, I. I wanna see this space used like everybody else, so, I, I think we're all in agreement that that space, we're paying.
Yep.
The town is paying for a space right now.
Yeah.
That has, the, the, absolutely nothing's being done.
Nothing.
It has. Right, we either use it or get rid of it.
But it has potential.
But it does, it does have potential for a lot of our, a lot of our, or s- some, not, maybe not a lot, but some of our agencies in town that could use that space, um, for certain things. Now, now we may be able to piggyback with the, this is just popping into my head right now, we may be able to pop, um, piggyback on with the library, she does things down there, maybe she can do things in Powell Center where people who live across the street here can get to it where they can't get to the library, right? So on a Thursday afternoon at two o'clock in July, she's doing things that sound right. She, we could give her a space right here where she could get some of the seniors here to do the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that would, just popped into my head right there, there's nothing, so.
It's, it's, yes.
That would fall under that whole.
Trying, making more connections.
Yes. Right.
Um, the very old together with the very young, those are the underserved populations in our town, um. It is a statewide goal that these things are addressed, it's not something that I just, you know, pulled off.
How do we wanna handle that?
Towns are also doing similar.
Um. I'm trying to think of the way to say it, um.
What logistics do we need to do in the building so we can let these people utilize the building, besides the lockbox? There, there's a little bit more stuff that we gotta do inside, 'cause I know we threw different ideas.
Probably, I really.
Can you?
Looked at it.
Can you bring this back to the next meeting of, of what we would, what expenses we would incur to, how, how much is a lockbox gonna cost us to get that set up? After the, the energy assessment and the A D A assessment and those things that have been done, what do we have to do to be in total compliance if, if the seniors were gonna use it every Tuesday? What, what kind of expenses would we incur, and then, excuse me, if we can have that for, I wouldn't think the sixteenth, but our next regular meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Which would be, uh, twenty-third, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, if we could have that for our next regular meeting, then, by then I'll think of the right terminology to come up with to move it forward so that it's not sitting there idle and empty.
And depending on how we're gonna lay it out, I think the fire marshal will change the occupancy number too.
Yes.
So, that's another part that we gotta look at.
Right. Right. But I'm just not gonna happen next week.
I'm just.
No, you're right, but, you're right, you know, so, take a little time to get this, but let's, let's bring that back on the twenty-third with those things, Tara, so that we can say, okay, it's gonna cost us two hundred and fifty bucks for a lockbox, yes, we're gonna do it, let's do it. And, like, thing.
Yep.
Alright.
Especially if the seniors really wanna get in there.
Doesn't matter who wants to, right?
I know, right, I agree.
If I, yeah, as soon as we get people using it, you can then apply for grants based on.
Their use.
Use and, and stuff.
We gotta get people to use it in order to be able to apply for grants to get the people to.
And I, yeah, and I.
So should we at least have them, put it to a motion that we're authorizing Tara to gather information, that way there's no.
No, I think.
I don't think we have to do that.
I'm not gonna.
I don't think we have to.
I just wanna make sure it doesn't go down the rabbit hole like it did before.
I know, I know, you know where I'm going.
I know exactly where you're going with it, but I don't think, if, if it comes down to where we have authorized her to gather information.
That's pretty sad.
Something, something pretty wrong.
That's pretty wrong.
Uh, but I agree with you, I know where you're going.
And I'd like to remind everybody that Tara is really, you know, unless she doesn't like the title, town manager, but she graduated. We paid for her to go to school, there was also a grant, she did not want that title, but she really is a town manager.
Doing the job.
She's doing the job of a town manager, that's all I'd like to say about that, thank you very much.
Tara's official title is executive assistant for the town of Powell, making that clear.
Because that's what she chose.
Well, we agree.
And we agree, absolutely.
Hard time cleaning position hiring recommendation in action.
Um, so we have a lot of candidates for this.
We have twelve, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And applicants, they narrowed it down based on, um, experience and that sort of thing. I tried to do three interviews, I ended up doing two, they were both really great candidates, um, but I am recommending that we hire Nikki Carbonero, um, she is, her maiden name is Carbonero, she's not married Carbonero, she's from Stromeyer Road, 'cause there are two in Powell, trying to tell everyone which one it is. Um, and so I interviewed with her, she's great, she's very timely, um, most of us know her.
You said she had really good, um, references?
And I give references, she worked with Clara, her. Years.
Then I hope.
Yeah. It's a planning experience, so. That was my recommendation.
What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to hire Nikki Carbonero as our hard-time cleaning person on recommendation of our executive assistant, since she did the interviews.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question, so this is gonna be, be agreed upon rate that we had it listed for?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty dollars an hour. Yes, twenty dollars an hour up to ten hours a week.
That's all I have.
And no more questions, all in favor? All right, moving right along. Welcome, Angie. Uh fiscal year general and low budget discussion.
Um, this was just to see if anybody had any thing, any questions, any? Um, anything you wanted to say, I did kinda wanna just point out that I made some pie charts for everyone.
Yeah, so you did a lovely job.
That show and these will be, I will put them on the website tomorrow, they are in the archive or should be soon.
When you do the um. Post this on Facebook, would you include that pie chart? Perfect.
Um, so the pie chart shows. The um essential services, it shows one pie chart that has essential services separated from the general budget, so you can see sort of the overall percentage. You're paying tax wise towards that, um, I really want to show people that. Almost seventy percent of your taxes is actually school taxes. You know, the nine, and this this pie chart, nine percent is for the general fund. Seven percent is essential services, sixteen percent is the road fund. And then like miniscule ballot articles, and then on the second pie chart, what I did was I included. I grouped the general fund with the essential services. So our. Ass portion is sixteen percent of the overall tax bill. And it matches road. Road has sixteen percent of your overall tax bill and now municipal general fund with essential services has.
So I wanna talk on the essential services part of it for a minute. Um, because that's new in here, okay? So I've given this some thought since since an email or two was coming through. After the initial budget. So the number for essential services. Which equals seven percent of the budget. That total number is all three organizations. Okay, right, so. Whatever, it's gonna be short and it's gonna be sweet. The the four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for essential services. Whether it's here in the general budget. Or if it was down there under ballot articles, it was going to be the same number. Those are the numbers that. The the three organizations. Had whether whether it was gonna be on a ballot article, so you're gonna vote for it on. Paper A. Or you're gonna vote for it on paper B. Okay, or against it, whatever, however you're gonna vote, you're you're going to vote, whether it's on paper A or paper B. You were voting for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Period. It's it's, that's just the facts, now it's built into the general budget, but it's the same numbers. The numbers were not gonna change if they were ballot articles, that was not gonna change at all. I just wanna get that out there and we all know that, but unfortunately, some emails that came through. Uh, weren't the friendliest on on that part of what's going on and where did we come up with those numbers? We didn't come up with the numbers, okay, we didn't, those are numbers that were presented through. The requested through emergency services.
That's right, and I just wanna remind everybody, we had a meeting with every single one of them, and then we had a combined meeting. And they all told us what they needed and how much it was gonna cost. This isn't something that just came out of thin air.
Well, yeah, we didn't pull this out, so I just, you know, like I said, you're gonna vote for it on. You're gonna vote for it on paper A or you're gonna vote for it on paper B, you're gonna cast your vote one way or the other on either A or B. But you were gonna cast your vote for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, period. And I just wanted to get that out there, that's a perfect opportunity to.
Great job on the chart, you, by the way, and you should have some of them for.
And we can actually make posters now with our new printer, so.
Oh, nice. Very nice.
Anybody have anything on the road or or um general budget, any questions, everybody looked at? I thought it looks like. It's a pretty super solid budget for comparatively speaking to what everybody else is going through. You know, I know our general fund looks like it went up a super ton amount of money, but it's that four hundred and fifty.
It actually came down, the amount to be raised by taxes for the general fund came down, but because we added the four hundred and fifteen thousand.
So I'm I'm. Gonna sit here and say that I'm fairly proud of the budget that has been put together for. The next fiscal year.
Say that for the state side.
Both rolling in general, so that's not. Out of that, out of that thirty thirty something percent that we have control or thirty-three percent of. Control over Brian, I'm pretty happy with what we have, so. Yeah, the sixty-seven percent for the education portion of it is like, oh, man, but whatever. It's not our, that's that's another battle. That's not one we're we're not, we don't have to answer that one, we don't have to fight that one. So, all right. Town warning, review and discussion.
So this is the draft warning, um, the one that I sent you, Article Five will actually come off. That uh it was an article, we are gonna try to remove the public monies, trustee of public monies, but after the L C T and our lawyer said. It's easier just to leave it on there, we've decided to leave it on there, um. But then we have the cemetery article. And uh the Article Seven isn't one that I've mentioned to you all before. Julie and I did a town meeting training the other day and learned that you can actually, remember when we did the vote to do a postcard? To report notice of availability, you can. Do away with that and just post notice of availability on your website, so that would save us another almost fifteen hundred dollars. Plus my time of sorting the voter checklist to do the mailing of the postcards. Um, so that's why I put this on here to see if if the voters will approve us just posting it on our website and at the stores instead of doing the postcard mailers. Um, we got it, saves lots of money and lots of time. And then I've had. Everyone read this a few times and I've done the, the numbers are in there, if they don't change on the sixteenth, this piece will be the numbers that you all approve next week. If they don't change.
Sounds good.
Yep, and it's it's a different format, a little bit different of a format. After that training, I decided that it looked better the way they had it in the training, so.
All right, so you did the training, board. All right, we're good with that? Public comment, you know? No hands? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to enter into the executive session for legal. All in favor?